All right, good evening. It is 6:30 on June 28, 2022. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the flag of our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Joe, are you ready to proceed?
I am.
And Liz, you ready to proceed?
Yes.
All right, then I would take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes dated June 22, 2022.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded as there is a need for further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to trustees of reservations for Winds &amp; Wine at World's End to be held on Friday, July 8, 2022, with a rain date of Sunday, July 10, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. I believe we have, is it Ms. Scheck? Is she here? She's not here. Okay, do we anticipate it this evening?
We do.
We do, okay. All right, so what I'll do, I'll delay that motion and I'll delay that item until later in the evening. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to review an approval of the FY '22 intra department and reserve fund transfers. So I think Sue and Michelle are going to walk us through. Sue, welcome. Come on up.
Hello. My God, it's been a long time since we've done this. At least live, anyway.
Good to see you.
All right, so do you want to walk us through what we're transferring tonight and what's happening?
Yes. This is a yearly thing at the end of the fiscal year. We do intra and interdepartment transfers by state statute. We can do it the last two months of the year. And the reserve fund transfers, we usually wait till the end of the year, only due to, you know, the expenses. We want to get it as close to June 30th as we can to make sure we don't have to come back for another one. On this first sheet, the spreadsheet, the FY '22 appropriation was 664,0578. Article 11, at the town meeting of '22, we voted to approve 950,820. We had two reserve fund transfers during the year, so our surplus as of right now is 1,535,000. Tonight, we are going to have six reserve fund transfers and a few inter and intra department transfers. So we will start with the reserve fund transfers request. The first one is for the Department of Public Works for an amount requested of $460,000. This request is necessary for the following reason. The October 2021 northeaster wind and rainstorm created extensive tree damage throughout Hingham and caused the town to lose over 200 trees. The severity of the damage required that DPW bring in specialized equipments and crews through the town's tree contractor, Pathfinder Tree, for three days to take down public trees out of roadways, offhouses, and out of private property. Bucket truck crews and chippers were contracted well after weeks, weeks after the storm, to clean up debris. Tree removal crane crews and equipment were also hired to take down trees that were damaged during the storm and presented a danger to the public. DPW teams worked with Hingham Municipal Light Plant to assist in the cleanup so that the power could be restored throughout the town. Finally, a general contractor for the DPW removed many tree stumps and repaired streets and sidewalks that were damaged. All of these cleanups and recovery services exceeded DPW's operating budget for storm response.
All right, what I think I'll have you do is, without objection, I'll go, if you want to summarize all the reserve fund transfers, and then we'll vote those and we'll go to interdepartment. So if you could go through the two, three, I think the six for reserve fund transfers, and then I'll open it up to questions, and then we'll move on to the interdepartment.
You've got it. Okay, the next reserve fund transfer is for DPW, for $391,620, and this is for snow and ice. This request is to cover the snow and ice removal expenses for the winter season for FY '22. The next one, workers' compensation for $320,000. This request is extraordinary because FY '22 had several major injuries to both municipal and school employees. The next reserve fund transfer is for legal, $250,000. This is to pay for the legal expenses from FY '22. This amount is net of transferring about 14,000 in water legal expenses back to the Ware River Water System Enterprise Fund budget. The next one is for unemployment for $66,201. This is to pay for the unemployment benefits for FY '22 from municipal and school employees. The last reserve fund transfer is for town meeting, $6,900. This is to cover the balance of the cost of outdoor auto equipment services and 1,000 chairs for the annual town meeting 2022, which was held outdoors.
Okay. Sue, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we'll stop you there, and I'll see if anybody has any questions or concerns. So Liz, do you want to start it off tonight?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Sue, for going through that. Obviously, we know the October storm was quite significant, so we were expecting this. Do we know if this is the total? Is all of that work complete?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, and then snow and ice, we're expecting that. The workers' compensation, unforeseen reasons, I mean, is that something that we normally budget closer to, or?
Most years, we do not have to come for a reason. We, put it this way, the last three years, we did not.
Okay.
FY '22 was an extraordinarily bad year.
Difficult year, okay.
If I can just interject, so am I correct that we self-funded this?
Yes, we do.
So this is not typical businesses paying to insurance. In this case, the town sell funds, which is why we have the extraordinary amount.
Yes.
Yep.
Legal, and then the, okay, unemployment, and then town meeting. So what was the total cost of the annual town meeting?
I don't have the Munis sheet in front of me, but I want to say it was close to $25,000.
Okay.
Yes. And typically, the audio services is the bulk of that, as well as the warrant printing, and then there's additional expenses related to the chairs, the stenographer, and a couple other ancillary things. So 25, maybe 30,000.
Okay. All right, thank you.
My apologies. Michelle, did you want to add anything to Sue's comments?
No, I don't think so. I'm happy to help answer questions, so thank you.
All right, Joe?
Great. Sorry to interject before. So with respect to the two DPW items, which are the largest ones, $460,391, $391,000, do you know to what extent those cover labor costs as opposed to materials?
I do not.
Okay. Because there's a substantial amount of work done by our employees, I'm assuming there was overtime involved, and so there were substantial payments to employees who did an incredible job. And we have seen projections for those two all along, and I think these numbers are consistent with the projections that we've seen. For workers' comp, that's my understanding, as I said, that's a self-funded item, and so when we have extraordinary or unforeseen events, we have to, the town has to step up and cover. And legal services, I know that we have been on track to right-size our budget, to make sure that we properly account for expected legal fees. And for town meeting, Liz, were you suggesting perhaps we should cancel town meeting?
No, I was just trying to understand the total cost and if we can forecast that a little better.
I mean, I think, you know, there are extra costs associated with outdoor town meetings. I know the residents have at least contacted me and been very appreciative that they've been outside, they feel safe, but we do have to bring in the chairs, and those are expensive. I think in the overall scheme of things, these extra costs are rather modest, so I'm uncomfortable with these. Thank you, and Sue, thank you for your efforts, too.
You're very welcome.
All right, so before we vote these, I'll see, any member of the public have any questions or concerns about the reserve fund transfers? Chief, come up to the mic, just introduce yourself.
Just a comment on the DPW with the snow removal. So that January 28 snowstorm has been accepted as a disaster declaration by the president, so we are in the process of reimbursing, we're not getting reimbursed, getting reimbursed for that. So right now, the town is potentially looking at an initial damage assessment of about $437,000 that would be reimbursed to the town. And of that, there's about $40,000 that would go to Hingham Light. The remainder would cover police, fire, and then DPW, including some contract costs for snow removal and stuff like that. So under the DPW portion, the biggest thing is their payment to others, which is about $241,000. So that's potential that the town is going to recoup that, who knows how long it takes. They were better the last time, so 2018, I think it took us about a year to get it back. But right now, we're working with FEMA, and it's been accepted and everything else, so we'll let you know when that goes through.
And to record reflect, that was Chief Stephen Murphy of the Hingham Fire Department.
So do you know in what fiscal year those funds are reported? Is it the year that we receive the cash, or does it date back to when we incur the expense?
When we get the reimbursement, it'll go actual, follow right to fund balance in the year that we receive.
Got it, okay. Thanks.
We still have to fill the negative now.
Right.
Right.
Chief, thank you.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Appreciate that. That's great. Anyone else in the public have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, why don't we just take these item by item before we move to interdepartment transfers? So with that, I would take a motion.
I'll make...
Liz, I was going to say, do you want to do the first three, and I'll do the second three?
Sure. I'll make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to DPW expenses, road building, in the amount of $460,000.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to DPW snow and ice in the amount of $391,620.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to workers' compensation in the amount of $320,000.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I move to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to Select Board Legal Services in the amount of $250,000.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I move to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to unemployment in the amount of $66,201.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I move to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to town meeting equipment rental in the amount of $6,900.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, Sue, if you could walk us through the interdepartment transfers?
I can. The first interdepartment transfer is for debt service in the amount of $139,346. This is going to be transferred from group insurance to the debt service. The reason for this is to pay for the cost of both issuance and interest on the spring '22 bands due to no premium on the issuance of this fiscal year's rollover of temporary Second one is for the police department in the amount of $9,775. It is going to come from animal control salaries to police department salaries. This is to cover the overage in the police salary department budget. The next one is for elections in the amount of $6,784. It is going to be transferred from town clerk salaries to the elections salary of $3,284 and elections expenses of $3,500. The reason for the transfer is to cover the purchase of new ballot box for the front of town hall, salaries for registrars, and payroll costs for election workers to raise them up to minimum wage. The next interdepartment transfer is for celebrations in the amount of $3,500. It is coming from the veteran service salaries to celebrations on Veterans Day to cover additional expenses for landscaping work to complete the POW/MIA memorial in Hingham Harbor. The next interdepartment transfer is for the police department in the amount of $3,000. It is coming from the animal control expenses to police department salaries. This is to cover the overage in the police salary budget. The next one is for human resource in the amount of $1,600. It is coming from the Select Board meetings and seminars to human resources meetings and seminars. This is to cover the balance from the June 22, 2022 leadership training for department heads on communications and setting boundaries. The last interdepartment transfer is for GIR Hall in the amount of $1,000. It's coming from veteran services salaries to GIR Hall R&amp;M buildings. This is to cover the cost of repairing the handicap lift in GIR Hall after it did not pass state inspection this spring. The total cost of the repair was about $5,600. And that's it for the interdepartment transfers.
Sue, thank you. Michelle, do you want to add anything?
Just to clarify on the debt service transfer, Sue mentioned that that part of that is because we did not get a premium on the bond issuance this spring. We have no control over how those bids come in, but typically, we've paid for the cost of issuance out of the bond premium, so that's part of why you're seeing a transfer this year to cover those expenses.
Great, thank you. All right, Joe?
So I was actually going to comment on that. We did get a bid that would have paid us premium, but the interest was higher, and so from an economic standpoint, we did better off getting the lower interest rate and foregoing the premium. So this was ultimately a good decision for the town. And the other items, I think, are adequately covered. I've got no questions on those. Thank you.
Liz?
Just, and these are small amounts, so it's minor, but the transfer from animal control to police department, is that to cover overtime, or?
Chief Jones may want to answer that, but yes.
Okay.
Chief, come on up, state your name for the record, if you don't mind.
I will.
Thank you.
Good evening. So David Jones, a police chief for the town of Hingham. So it is to cover mostly overtime. We had five officers that have been out on long-term disability this year that we had to backfill their shifts. Two officers who transferred to different agencies, one to the state police, one to Quincy. And then we had two retirements recently, today, in fact, we had some payouts, and then we had overtime that was due to police reform and the unfunded mandates that the state put on us, so we had to have a number of officers go through some additional training.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No other questions? Thank you.
Then one from the public, have any questions or comments? Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion. Do you want to break it up again?
Sure.
You want to do the first three or four?
Sure. I'll make a motion to recommend an interdepartment transfer from group insurance to debt service in the amount of $139,346.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to recommend an interdepartment transfer from animal control salaries to police department salaries in the amount of $9,775.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to recommend an interdepartment transfer from town clerk salaries to elections salaries for $3,284 and to elections expenses in the amount of $3,500.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to recommend an interdepartment transfer from veteran services salaries, clerical services, to celebrations of Veterans Day in the amount of $3,500.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I move to recommend an interdepartment transfer from animal control expenses to police department salaries in the amount of $3,000.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I move to recommend an interdepartment transfer from Select Board meetings and seminars to human resources meetings and seminars in the amount of $1,600.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And I move to recommend an interdepartment transfer from veteran services salaries, clerical services, to GIR Hall R&amp;M buildings in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, Sue, one last?
One last bunch.
One last one, intra?
Intra department transfers. The first one is for DPW in the amount of $230,000. This is transferring from DPW payroll to DPW road building expense account. This is due to projects unforeseen, handicap space on Main Street, drainage repair projects throughout the town, and MS4 stormwater requirements mandated by the MassDEP and US EPA. An intra department transfer from payroll budget is needed to cover the cost in the road building budget. The second one is for town clerk in the amount of $23,740. This is going from salaries to expenses. This is to cover consulting expenses, new precinct expenses, printing, street listing books for two years, and reallocation of expenses according updated state election grant guidelines. The next one is for the police department, $25,000. This is going from transfer from the expenses up to the salaries, and this is for the overage in the salary budget. The next one is for recreation in the amount of $18,500. This is to be transferred from the turf maintenance payroll to the turf maintenance expense line. This is for extra expenses for weed whacking of athletic fields. The next one is for town hall in the amount of $6,000. It's transferred from the expenses on natural gas to salaries and overtime. This is to cover town hall maintenance team overtime for snow and storm removal and recovery and special events throughout the fiscal year. Next one is for IT in the amount of $1,429, transferred from expenses to salaries. This is the deficit caused by the accrual buyout due to the retirement of IT manager. The next one is for historical preservation in the amount of $1,200, from historical expenses to historical salaries. The reason for the transfer is the employee reached longevity status but wasn't budgeted. Step increase was due to new salary schedules. And the last one is for the treasurer collector in the amount of $871, goes from expenses to salaries, and this is due to the new GOV HR salary schedules. All step increases were done on June 1st.
Sue, thank you. Michelle, do you want to add anything?
I don't think so. Happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Great, all right. Liz?
Thank you, Sue, again for explaining that. The DPW, I know we're doing the handicap space on Main Street, happy to see that done, and I know we've talked about some of the stormwater requirements that are mandated that we would have to fund, so was expecting to see that. Let's see. For town clerk, these are probably just one-time expenses, I'm assuming? Yes, okay. So not something we're budgeting going forward. And then the turf maintenance, what were those expenses?
I know Mark's here, but that was related to extra weed whacking this year that we covered out of expenses.
Okay.
And then repurposed some money from the seasonal employees that he was hiring for the new turf maintenance program to help it get off the ground and do some initial cleanup of the fields.
Great, excellent. Okay, and then the salary schedules, yeah, the step increases. So those, we should, those should all be done now, right?
Yes. Yes, they should be.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. No other questions.
Joe?
Thank you, Liz. You covered a lot of the issues I was going to touch on, but I want to get back to the turf maintenance one. Does the $18,000, does that reflect an increase over what was budgeted, or were we expecting this amount?
No, that was still within the turf maintenance budget.
Okay. And then, could you explain, because I just don't understand what the accrual buyout means? I understand that the IT manager retired, but what is an accrual buyout?
Paying for vacation time.
Vacation sickened person.
That was not used.
Okay, so basically, time that had accrued but not yet.
Yes.
Got it, okay. And that's it? No other questions? Thank you.
Would anyone from the public, I'd like to ask any questions or offer any comment. All right, seeing none, I count eight, so you want to break them up, four and four?
Yes.
All right, so you want to go first?
I'll go first this time. I move to recommend an intra department transfer from DPW salaries to DPW road building in the amount of $230,000.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I move to recommend an interdepartment transfer from town clerk salaries to town clerk expenses in the amount of $23,740.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I move to recommend an interdepartment transfer from police department expenses to police department salaries in the amount of $25,000.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I move to recommend an interdepartment transfer from recreation turf maintenance salaries to recreation turf maintenance expenses in the amount of $18,500.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to recommend an intra department transfer from town hall expenses, natural gas, to town hall salaries, overtime, in the amount of $6,000.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to recommend an intra department transfer from information technology expenses to information technology salaries in the amount of $1,429.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to recommend an intra department transfer from historical preservation expenses to historical preservation salaries in the amount of $1,200.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Make a motion to recommend an intra department transfer from treasurer collector expenses to treasurer collector salaries in the amount of $871.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Sue, I'll send you over to advisory with a little gift here.
I thank you. Get to do it all over again.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Seeing you. Next item on the agenda is to adopt the Town of Hingham Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2022, and we have Chief Murphy here to kind of walk us through this. So Chief, why don't you come on up to the table and join us up here?
Do you want to go into this? I will. All right. Chief, good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Want to give us an update?
Yes, so the, to refresh your memories on this, the town has a hazard mitigation plan that was adopted in 2016. Originally, going back, it was actually originally done in 2008 as a multi-jurisdictional type of thing. The town adopted their own in 2016, and per FEMA requirements, we're supposed to update it every five years. So we contracted with MEPC, and starting back in, I think it was late August last year, we started working with them to update it. We've had two public meetings on it. We've also had a few working sessions with different representatives from different departments that, you know, kind of contributed to this, and the plan was presented to you guys by MEPC specifically, and back sometime in April, I'm not sure of the exact date. So she took your recommendations, any other changes, incorporated them into the final plan, so tonight, we're here just for approval of the final plan. Then this will, the plan then gets submitted to MEMA first to adopt it, and then after that, it goes to FEMA for their adoption as well. And these are required, every community after about 2004 is required to have a plan like this to be eligible for any federal funding to do with climate, or not climate change, but anything to do with hazard mitigation planning or anything. And this specifically focuses on natural hazards. So for us, the biggest thing is flooding, you know, and it has been, but it also looks at other natural hazards or anything else, and how the town can work to mitigate any at other natural hazards or anything else and how the town can work to mitigate any of those or anything like that, so.
But Chief, I have reviewed it and I very much appreciate the effort you put into it and all others put into it, so it's a well-documented plan and I know a lot of work went into it in a couple of months, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, Liz, want to go first? Any questions?
Sure. Yes, thank you. It's impressive piece of work. So, did you say that it's already been approved by M E M A and FEMA?
No. This is, you guys are the first step and then it will get submitted to M E M A for their approval and then I believe it has to get signed or submitted to FEMA, but I may be wrong on that. It may only be M E M A that needs to approve at Mass Emergency Management, so.
Okay. And then would they, would they make changes or?
No. It's usually just, it's adopted or they could, you know, kick it back and say, we would like to recommend you make these changes, but they don't have the authority to make any changes without it being, going through the process again.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Joe. So Chief, I was gonna ask you about page 85. We have, the three of us have reviewed this. We really do appreciate your work. I just want to understand, are there different standards applied by FEMA and M E M A or is it basically one standard?
No, it's, M E M A is kind of almost just the middle person in this and they use the FEMA standards and everything else, so this is very normal in that type of world that they just take what FEMA is putting out there and they just, you know, kind of become the middle person, so.
So I'm reviewing this, there's a lot in here that is consistent with the Harvard Development Group's concerns and how they're addressing climate change and so this is, this is a wonderful guide for the town. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And one of the things that M A P C had commented on too is since the 20,000, or 2016 plan, the town went and did the M V P planning as well and a lot of that kind of ties in together. So, some communities actually will do those as a combined type of thing with M V P and M A P C, but because of the timing on this and with the update for this, then the M V P had already been done and so maybe the next time we can kind of incorporate both of them together, but.
I mean, climate change is, is the big item here, so.
It is.
We appreciate your, making the town ready.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you. Anybody from the public have any questions or concerns? All right, seeing none. I think what we'll do is, why don't we do this for the, for the vote? Joe, do you want to take the first two whereas? Liz, you do the second two whereas and I will do the last paragraph? Sound good?
Yes.
All right, then I will take a motion.
Whereas the town of Hingham established a committee to prepare the Town of Hingham Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022 update and whereas the Town of Hingham Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022 update contained several potential future projects to mitigate potential impacts from natural hazards in the Town of Hingham. And?
And whereas duly noticed, public meetings were held by the local hazard mitigation planning team on January 10th, 2022 and April 12th, 2022 and whereas the Town of Hingham authorizes responsible departments and/or agencies to execute their responsibilities demonstrated in the plan.
Now, therefore be resolved that the Town of Hingham Select Board adopts the Town of Hingham Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022 update in accordance with Mass General Law, Section 40, Section 4 or the Charter and Bylaws of the Town of Hingham.
Second.
All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Chief, thank you. I'm gonna keep you up here though, we have one more item for you, all right? Kathy, do you want to come up, move off to the next one if you don't mind? Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of an agreement with Greenwood Emergency Vehicles for the purchase of a new fire engine. So, we have Chief back again with Kathy, so Chief, why don't you tell us a little bit about the purchase here and the engine's capabilities if you don't mind?
Yeah, so we have been working with Greenwood Fire Apparatus or Greenwood Emergency Vehicles on the design of a replacement fire engine pumper. This would be replacing a vehicle that was originally purchased in 2002. The manufacturer of the vehicle is actually called an E1, which is actually what that vehicle is replacing. And so, for the last probably six or nine months, we've had a internal community or internal committee that has been evaluating different options on different fire trucks and they narrowed it down to going with Greenwood with the E1 from four different choices. They were all very, very similar and to be honest with you, the pricing kind of was the biggest factor. E1 offered the best pricing and very, very comparative to the other brands that are out there. We've owned E1 vehicles beforehand, so we're comfortable with them, we're comfortable with the service from Greenwood Emergency Vehicles, everything else, so we feel comfortable with this. This is a probably 20-year lifespan on the vehicle, so the plan is, is that once we get this, which unfortunately it takes about two years to get this because of, you know, delays in the main, the parts and everything else, but once we get it, then it will replace one of the engines that is currently in service as a primary that was purchased in 2015 and then that engine will become a reserve engine. We haven't completely committed yet to which engine we're gonna replace, so I don't want to say anything now and then change our mind in two years that we want to, you know, switch it out or anything else, but, yeah, that's basically the, the deal. This is to commit to purchase the engine. It does not include the equipment. We will spec out the equipment on our own afterwards and put it on there just because it gives us better options on what we want to do and making sure that everything is correct. And that's about it. Any other specific questions?
Let's go to Kathy first. Kathy, you want to add anything to the presentation?
We're purchasing this under the cooperative contract called H G A C, Houston Galveston, Council, and it is a nationwide cooperative that is particular to public safety.
Okay. It's my understanding that buying, making the purchase now or contracting for it was saving like $30,000 or so, is that correct?
It's a little bit more than that.
Yeah, there was, a price change is coming June, after June 30th.
So there's more.
So that was, yeah, that was another.
Almost 90,000.
Yeah, would have been almost 90,000, like seven, seven percent.
So by buying it now, we save $90,000?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Okay. Any questions? Liz.
Could you just explain the, the payment terms, Kathy?
Sure. As, as we wrote it with the Hingham contract terms, it is, it is to be paid when, upon receipt, however, there are options in there.
Yes.
That we have not taken.
Okay.
That would result in discounts if we break it into two or three or any one of those, those pieces that it's outlined, which is more like a, they're looking for a deposit, we're not gonna pay a deposit, but the other ones might be at certain, if they finish a certain part, like the, you know, building a certain part, they may bill us and if, if we pay it at that stage, we could get the related discount. So, it would be, what'd we say, seven or eight thousand?
About 7250 if we, you know, if we apply those. That's similar to what we did with both the last three vehicles that we purchased for engines or ladder, so on the Pierce Ladder, which we bought, the Tower Ladder in 2018, 2019, we used a similar thing and actually the replay, the, one of the vehicles that this is going to replace is a frontline vehicle, we did the same back in 2015. So it's kind of standard, it's not, it's based on things like when they get the frame and when they start building the engine out on it and stuff, not necessarily like a third of the construction or anything else.
Okay.
Right, because it's, it's highly customized.
Yeah.
To what the chief needs.
So are we still considering that or are we planning to just pay 100% upon delivery?
I don't think that we've made a decision on it, but we don't have to.
Okay.
Until we start going down the road and then seeing where they're at. I imagine that they'll contact us.
Yeah.
At the, at the milestones and then we'll go from there.
Yes, yes, I'm sure.
And, and to be perfectly honest with you with that, if we, the only one that we would consider now, which we talked about it earlier and I don't think we're considering it, is the deposit right now. But, the other two, most likely, we're not even gonna, you know, find out about the first one on that for probably about a year and a half, because until they actually get the frame and start the construction of it, the construction time alone, it only takes usually about three months, you know? So what we're waiting for is to get in queue to get the parts and everything else to be able to start that built portion and we wouldn't have to pay anything until they actually start working on our truck, so.
Got it.
It's a little bit of a waste.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Joe. So, just following up on Liz's question, so my understanding is, the first item is really today, this week. A third would be due at the time of the contract and that would save us the 7250 and we're not going there.
Correct.
And, I would say, given where interest rates are, it makes sense not to be paying until the end, so I think you're, you're going the right way. The contract has, you mentioned about two years, it's 530 days, it's written in the contract, that's certainly a long time. The vehicle that is ultimately being replaced, it sounds like it's being, like the active vehicle gets pushed into reserve.
Correct.
And then the current reserve one, what happens to that? Is it disposed of? Is it sold?
We haven't decided yet with that. It would either be, usually what many of the manufacturers will do is they'll still be open to a trade-in at the end of the lifespan, because they don't want to, you know, obviously agree to a trade-in now and we still use the vehicle for the next year and a half, you know? So, we have that option. The last vehicle for the Quint, when we sold that, we sold that at kind of an auction almost, so there are different options on it, but no, we will not be keeping it or anything else. And I know the last time we offered it up to other town departments and Mike Clancy thought he could use the ladder truck, we kind of, Tom said, "No, you can't," so I can't speak if someone else will have an interest in, in old fire engine, so.
Is there a limitation on the garages that this vehicle can fit in? Because I know we have some, some vehicles that will not go in all of our stations.
Correct. There will not be any limitations on this vehicle.
Great.
So, it's the, I shouldn't say that, there is, it will fit, but it will, it's, it's the same problem that we have right now at the outside stations.
Like North Station?
Correct. It will fit in there, but we would not be able to put another vehicle behind it like we used to be able to do, you know, 15 years ago.
Yeah.
So, but no difference, it, they, this would be about the same size as the current engines that we have, which are the newest engines, Engine 2 and Engine 3, this is, this is about the same, so.
And I do notice that you chose as a color red. Does this, that, that continues to be the standard color?
Although it does have a black.
I did see, a cab roof is black.
A cab roof is black, but yeah.
No other questions? Second.
Great. Anybody from the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Greenwood Emergency Vehicles LLC for the purchase of an E1 Cyclone stainless pumper in an amount not to exceed
Second.
All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Chief, Kathy, good to see you again.
Thank you.
Kathy, have a good July.
Thank you.
Okay, gonna move back to item three on the agenda. Gonna, next item on the agenda is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to trustees of reservation for Winds and Wine at World's End to be held on Friday, July 8, 2022 with a rain date of Sunday, July 10th, 2022 from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And do we have Ms. Schenck?
Yes.
Come on up. Ah, great. If you go up and come up to the microphone, just state your name and address for the record and tell us a little about your event.
Sure. Hi, Alyssa Schenck, based at Werewer Farm at the trustees at 140 Turkey Hill Lane. Do you need my home address or just my?
No, that's good.
Yeah, so the event is a classical concert at World's End up on Planters Hill and we have 150 tickets available for people. There's going to be field parking, wine and a beautiful sunset view at the end.
Excellent. And has the chief, it's Department of Review, the application, come up, Chief? Well, we got you here, I know we're gonna, just real quick, if you could, while we do have you here, just take a, if you reviewed the application, have any concerns or comments?
Yeah, I have reviewed the application and I have no concerns, but they've had several events that have been successful without any issues, so.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Any questions from my colleagues? Liz?
No questions. I've reviewed the application and we know many successful events have been there all the time, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I agree.
Great. Anybody from the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to the trustees of reservations for Winds and Wine at World's End to be held on Friday, Ju, July 8, 2022 with a rain date of Sunday, July 10th, 2022 from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second.
All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your event.
Thank you.
Good coming in tonight. Thank you. Great. All right, next item on the agenda, it's past 7 o'clock, is to consider a joint session, to hold a joint session with the Recreation Commission to appoint a candidate to fill the vacancy on the Recreation Commission. So why don't we come up? If you want to come up, Vicki, bring your board up if we can get some seats for you.
We're actually in order. We started our meeting at 6:30 this evening, our regular monthly meeting, so we are in order.
All right, excellent. Well, welcome, welcome back again. All right.
So, we, we heard from the three applicants last week and I just want to start off by saying, I was very impressed by all three applicants, just, you know, I started my journey in town government as a Recreation Commissioner many moons ago, back in 1998 and I loved being on the commission, it's a wonderful, wonderful board and you do such great work now, so I want to thank you for all you do. I know that, you know, hearing from all three applicants, all of them were very prepared, very passionate and just came ready to fill the vacancy. I think I could feel comfortable putting anyone there, but we only have one vacancy tonight, so, would you like to offer any comments?
No, I really am looking to your group for your recommendations, your guidance. You'll have to live with this person.
Yes. For a year.
And I, I agree with Bill, we have three excellent candidates, all well-qualified, so we cannot go wrong. Liz?
Yes, I was very impressed with all the candidates, their experience, their energy, their willingness to jump in and, and help was impressive, so I hope they will serve somewhere, regardless of the outcome tonight.
Totally agreed. I have to say, so proud of the Rec Commission and where we are today, to have such amazing candidates come before this group and be so passionate and have done homework to know exactly, you know, where the Rec Commission is today and where they feel that we could go, so I was very impressed. Do you want to, how do you want to go about?
So, want we, any other comments from anybody on the commission, like to add anything?
No, because all of us echo the same words.
Exactly. Okay. All right, so I, I think what I'll do is, I think Joe's right, we'll, we'll look, we'll, I'll entertain a motion in a second here and then if the motion's seconded and there's no need for further discussion, I'll call a vote on the first motion. Depending upon the number of votes, we will move to a second vote if necessary. If it's, if it's obviously a, a clear majority and we don't need to move second vote, then whoever applicant is nominated will be the, the new, will fill the new vacancy.
Thank you.
Okay?
And when you say the new vacancy, how long is that term?
It's a, it's a one-year term to fill the vacancy and then next year it would be.
Till the election.
Till the election.
Got it.
And so that means there'd be two open seats next year, just to be clear, so I hope the candidates heard me loud and clear because they were people that we'd love to We'd love to have them all.
Great.
All right. With that, then I would take a motion.
Do you want me to make a motion to hear from my colleagues and have a vote?
Well, no, since we're in joint session, I would take a motion from anyone.
All right.
Take motion to vote.
Make a motion, make a motion to make an appointment.
Make a motion to the Rec. Commission.
Yes.
I will make a motion to make an appointment to the Rec. Commission.
But you need to include a name.
And we need a name, though.
Make a motion to nominate Matthew LaBretton.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
All right, the motion had been made and seconded. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, made and seconded. Is there need for further discussion on the motion? Harry, none. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to Matt LaBretton. He'll be great.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you. You want to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes, thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the Rec.
Before you do, so just, so we make sure we have the right motion that's voted on?
Yes.
The motion would be that the Select Board and Recreation Commission appoint Matt LaBretton to the Recreation Commission to serve until a permanent member is elected at the 2023 town election, and we would do that by roll call.
That is a roll call vote, right? Yeah. I note on our procedural, it's going to be a roll call vote. Okay, great. All right, so let's go back. Motion made and seconded. Is there a second for that motion?
Yes.
That's seconded. Okay, do a roll call vote. So Ryan?
You need an aye or you need an aye?
Just need an aye.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Vicki?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
An aye and a aye as well, so the motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just make a motion to adjourn the Rec. Commission for June 28. Thank you very much.
Is there a second on that motion?
Seven, oh, please, yes. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, everybody, good seeing you. Have a good July. See you at the road race.
Yes.
So Michelle, who will notify? Okay, so the office will send out notice.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Vicki.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a climate action planning update. I think we have Brad and Tanya here, so, you know, Brad, if you want, you can, Brad, you want to join us up here or do you want to go to the podium, whatever you're comfortable?
Yes, slides.
Will you walk in around?
You're welcome to join us at the table, or you're welcome to stand for the podium too, Brad, whatever you're more comfortable doing.
As long as the pointer works.
Yeah, you got it. All right, Brad, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Thanks for coming in and thanks for all your work so far. You guys have been doing some great work. I had the pleasure of attending at least one of your meetings, so it was wonderful to hear, and it's a passionate group, so thank you so much.
Oh, no, thank you, and thank you for having us here tonight. Thank you to the Select Board for your support and to the two excellent Assistant Town Administrators we have with us this evening. Michelle and I go way back on green communities and moving the task force forward, and Art's been a great partner. I think we did fantastic with bringing him on board, and he's been working with the CAPC, so this is an excellent group, so thank you for having us here. So we wanted to come tonight, make sure I'm getting the right button. Or I guess I. Jill, Michelle, which one I'm supposed to click to advance here?
Maybe since it's.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Thank you, Michelle, appreciate that. So the materials are somewhat lengthy. Don't worry, we're not going to go through them all. Some of this is for the benefit of the record and also for your information, should you want to peruse at your leisure and have any questions. So we wanted to basically just provide an update on where the Climate Action Planning Committee is today. Oh, and apologies, I should introduce myself, sorry, Brad Moyer, 36 Wanderers Drive, Chair of the Climate Action Planning Committee. I'm joined tonight with Tanya Bodell, who's Executive Director of Energist Advisors LLC, who is a consultant generously funded by the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant and working with us on moving a climate action plan forward. Tanya and the Energist team have been fantastic partners. We're extremely pleased to have them, and Tanya with me here this evening to go over this. So we wanted just to provide you an update on where we are in our activities. As part of that, we'll briefly go over what our project plan is, our public outreach effort, and how we're going about on inventorying the greenhouse gas emissions, which are a necessary component of the Climate Action Plan, and what our next steps are. And as you can see, there are two appendices which have the extra material, as you can peruse as you will. Thank you, Michelle. So what I wanted to cover tonight, then, is we want to essentially affirm where we are with the climate action planning process. As you know, the town voted to put the CAPC, well, into existence back in town meeting of last year. We brought Energist Advisors on, and we were fully constituted and ready to go in March of this year. So we hit the ground running, got underway. What we would like to do as part of this meeting this evening is we want to make sure that the Select Board is informed of what we are up to. As you'll see when we get to the project planning period, there are some dates that are coming up in short order, namely in the fall, where if there's going to be any action that's requested of the town or the Select Board, we're going to be surfacing things at that time and bring them back to your attention. So our whole approach to this planning effort is to make sure no one is surprised by anything, and everyone has an opportunity to say whatever they would like along the way. Communication and public input is absolutely critical for the success of this planning effort. So as Bill noted at the outset, he's already attended some of our meetings, and so it's fantastic to have you, Bill, as our contact for the CAPC, so we'll be working with you, keeping you updated, and of course, Art has been a very generous partner with ours and working hand and glove, so we'll be sure to keep all the communication chains flowing and updated as things go on. We also look at our interactions with the Select Board and town administration as a chance to kind of test the waters of what our thoughts are, the directions that we're going in. We want to understand what's feasible from your viewpoint, we want your guidance and your input as well, so we definitely look for that and encourage that, and we'll want to really understand what's feasible and how to make things work. And then lastly, this is just one of many avenues for us to do public outreach efforts to keep the community informed. We just had our first public engagement session last week, which was attended by about 39 individuals. We had a lot of great input and pleased with that result when it was done on short order. We expect to have several more and do a lot more publicity and outreach, so we expect those numbers to grow. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tanya, who's going to give a little bit of a background on our planning efforts and how we get from A to Z.
Thank you. So I think the Climate Action Plan document itself is the end of the destination. It's really documentation of the process. The process is probably the most critical aspect of the whole plan, and luckily, Hingham has already decided where they want to go, and they want to go net zero, and the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant is going 100% renewables, and these are great things to start with. So the question is, how do you get there? And there's lots of ways to go from where Hingham is today, which is already down that path, to getting to a net zero by 2040, along with the RPS. The nice thing about having a municipal lighting plant is they make the decisions, and so going forward with an electrification can take advantage of a 100% renewable approach, going with electrification and transportation vehicles, and Hingham really controls that process. And the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant has been obviously a great partner and very innovative in a lot of ways to help move the ball forward. So the Climate Action Plan roadmap looks at a lot of different ways to be able to achieve that end, and that's what this process is about. Next step? I'll also say about that process, so I went to the University of Chicago and MIT, I'm very dollar sign oriented. So the cost benefits of this, where it's going to be, how much does it cost to get a certain amount of carbon emissions reductions? We'll be doing our best to answer those questions. Sometimes it's going to be relying on estimates, but that is also part of that process to help inform the recommendations on which path to take. All right. So the next piece, oh, no, no, sorry, go back if you could. So I think the other thing to realize is that a Climate Action Plan is different than a Resiliency Plan. So there's already efforts underway to think about how do you protect the harbor, how do you deal with the mitigation associated with sea level rise. The Climate Action Plan is really focused on carbon reduction, and that carbon reduction takes six categories. Energy, that's where the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant comes in, the buildings, what type of heating, for example, that's creating a lot of the carbon emissions right now in the town. Transportation, not just residents and the fleet, the municipal fleet, but also obviously school buses, and possibly even recommendations tied to the MBTA and ferries. You know, what kind of recommendations? Not that you necessarily have a huge sphere of influence there, but recommendations can be included in that plan. In addition, the waste. Waste is a large contributor to carbon emissions, and so how can Hingham reduce their waste? And there are different programs in place that have been shown to be effective. The community, these are some of the programs that Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant's already doing and going underway, and that includes incentives and communications and trying to get persuasive, persuasion to help people make the right decisions and information. And then the natural resources are looking at carbon sinks, for example. But we're going to try to stay very separate from the Climate Resiliency Plan, some of those efforts. That said, we think that there might be a little bit of overlap in especially the community and the natural resources, but that would be based on the communications. Okay, if you could go next. The approach is an iterative process. On the one side, you have the town governance, which is setting the goals. On the other side, the stakeholder participation, which, as Brad says, we've already moved forward with that, and that really takes it from the end goals, which have already been established, some of the strategies into the task results, back to the starting position, and reiterating again, that's why this outreach and communication is so important. Okay, next. This is very hard to read unless you have it right in front of you. I think the key message here, I will just say, we started a couple weeks later. I'm happy to say we are caught up to where we need to be to meet the deadlines that Brad's going to mention next. Also during that process, it's been a great process to really get into a collaborative teaming effort between Energist and CAPC and really understand who's doing what, how we move forward, how we lever each other, and I, just, it's been a great team, and Brad is wonderful as a leader, so just, it's been a wonderful couple months already. Do you want to talk about the key deadlines that we're aiming for?
Certainly. Thank you, Tanya. So as I mentioned at the outset, we're very focused on certain key milestones. The first you'll see that we had on the chart was September 30 of this year. What we are focused on is surfacing at that time anything that may require action at town meeting in 2023. That way we can start surfacing those requests with the Select Board, early on with town administration, as well as visery, so we are all aware of what's coming and we can plan appropriately. By the end of this year, we'd like our first full draft of the Climate Action Plan. Again, that gives the Select Board and town administration an opportunity to review and comment as we build towards finalizing any warrant action before the town. And I'm not saying that there will definitely be a warrant article or more to be put before the town, that will come out as part of our planning effort, but even if not, there are going to be some decisions we'll need to make as a town, and if it's at the Select Board level, we're going to want to wrap it into that process. And then March 31 would be to have the final draft completed, the plan done. That way, again, if there is action to be taken at town meeting, we've got the plan finalized and moving forward. So considering we were getting fully off and running in March, it's a very aggressive timetable, but one we're confident that we can meet, and this is not something that we can let slip. Time is of the essence if we're going to move forward with our climate action activities. So with that, Tanya, do you want to cover the public outreach efforts?
All right. So we worked with the CAPC Subcommittee to create a public outreach plan. It's actually a 12-page document that lays out who's doing what, what's going to be done. Again, the public outreach is a key part of this, getting the input from the town. Our goal is to make sure there's nobody in town that doesn't understand this is happening and have the opportunity to contribute. We may miss a couple who are esconced and hiding under rocks, but we're going to try very hard to make sure we find those people, especially if they're the divergers. We'll talk about that, but most certainly we want to hear not just the ones who are supporting it, but the ones who are against it.
Sure.
And why, and how we can bring their concerns to the table. So this just is a timeline that's in the appendix of the outreach plan that delineates some of the key communications. Highlighted in red are quarterly meetings with the Select Board. So you'll be seeing more of Brad, possibly myself, most likely some of the subcommittees of CAPC. So on a quarterly basis, we'll be submitting those requests.
Did you want to go through this as well?
Yeah, I think, we'll just go quickly on this. The outreach, we talked about it, you know, we need to make sure that it's politically feasible, socially feasible, and commercially feasible. And when I talked about the dollar signs cost benefits, it's really about commercially. Some of the technologies don't exist at the level that we'd want them to. For example, electric school buses, great, they're three times the cost of a diesel bus, and the gas price savings don't help. So we can back calculate out what the implied carbon cost is on that, and there might be something related to, okay, well, this is the target cost. If it's below that, we want to move forward. If it's above that, we're going to wait until technology comes down the cost curve. But the political feasibility is where conversations with you comes into play, and I think you can see how that all interrelates. Just quickly, and this is more technical tool-oriented, but we have, next slide, we have chosen a greenhouse gas inventory tool that's CDP, and Mass Energy Insight is something that the town's already using for their municipal, their municipal carbon emissions tracking. Both of them are free, both of them are effective, both of them are used by municipalities around the country and provide benchmarking opportunities so that Hingham can take a look at how its efforts are comparing going forward. So Energist has been retained to put the initial information into these tools and get it going, and then on an ongoing basis, it will be up to the town to either do it internally with, perhaps with their Sustainability Director or outsourcing to maintain that.
Great.
Okay, lastly, these, this is really important for people in the public who we definitely want to attend the CAPC meetings. These are the interesting topics we're going to be talking about. So tomorrow, we're focusing on transportation. What are the different approaches to get to the end goal? July, we're talking about buildings. The heating is almost half oil, half natural gas. That is going to be a challenge to think about, how do you decarbonize that? So we'll be talking about that in July. August, we'll be looking at waste and some of the community outreach and the community initiatives primarily led by HMLP. September, natural resources, and a contour of what the recommendations are going to be followed by a draft, final draft in November, December, and then the final, as Brad said, in March. So we encourage the public to join us. Please attend the CAPC meetings. Brad leads a tight ship, but there's a lot of great discussion and a lot of opportunity for the public to contribute in these topic areas, especially if there's a passion and interest and knowledge tied to that.
Right. To that point, we typically meet on Wednesdays on every other week basis, so, and we're pushing through on the summer with that and so far have been successful, vacations notwithstanding, so we're moving forward. So with that, that's the update that we wanted to provide. We're happy to take any questions or comments at this time.
Great. Well, thank you for the presentation. I, you know, I've said this before, but I think climate change is something that, you know, we as a town government are going to have to use all assets in fighting. So the goal to get to net zero by 2040, but also capital improvements to protect our infrastructure, it's something that's going to affect everybody. So again, I love the passion, and, you know, Tanya, you talked about passion and being on that meeting, I could tell, we pointed some great people to that committee, and we pointed a good, great leader to do it, to Brad, so thank you for your leadership here, too.
Thank you, Bill.
So you're going to come back quarterly and give us updates on where you are with the plan?
That's our intention, if you're happy to have us, absolutely.
Happy to have you. Yeah, thank you.
Great.
All right, Liz, you have any questions?
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you for all the work that's been done, and I know you worked very hard to get back on schedule. That 2040 deadline isn't changing, so thank you for that. So these, the schedule for discussions that you just went through, those are your regular Wednesday meetings?
Correct.
That the public can provide input at? Is that right? Okay.
Yep. And we typically, I mean, I could draw a list, sorry, but we typically do make decisions at those meetings regarding each of those components, so it's a perfect time to take input from the public because we do, we regularly are passing motions as to what's going in the plan, what's being considered, what's not. So we welcome all public input. Most of our meetings right now are by Zoom still. We find we've had better public participation in those sessions. If we could go to a hybrid model at some point, would love to do that as well, but we're doing whatever we can to make sure we get the most participation as possible.
Great. Excellent. Great. Excellent. And what was the response of the survey?
So the survey, as of last weekend, we had 195 survey respondents so far. I have the breakdown, just not stored in my head, my apologies, but I can certainly get that to you. And we're continuing to push that at various community events and so forth. So considering the survey has been active for about two to three weeks now, it's a fantastic uptake, and we're looking forward to more.
Excellent. Thank you.
Joe, any questions?
Yes, and by the way, this is really tremendous. I understand the categories, transport, buildings, waste. What is natural resources? I'm not sure I understand that.
No, I can start, and then you can give some of the feedback that we've gotten from the public meetings. So the natural resources are things like carbon sinks, preserving the natural areas that can help absorb some of the carbon, and thinking about, again, we're trying very hard to draw the line between the resiliency efforts and what the Climate Action Plan is, but there's a tiny little bit of overlap, and I think that that's where some of the recommendations that the resiliency committee are addressing may find their way into that section. There might be some recommendations tied to carbon sinks, rain gardens, thinking about discharge, just ways that you can use natural resources to help mitigate the carbon emissions.
So one of the ways you can think about, how do we credit ourselves for that? So we are blessed in Hingham with many public parks and open lands. Do you take credit for the current carbon sink potential of Wamputuk, you know, or not, you know? And, you know, our thinking on it is that we want to promote activities that are additive, you know? So what can we do as a community to promote further natural resource development or preservation? A good example of which was the, I'll call it the tree preservation bylaw effort earlier this year, although that was then moved into the planning board. But that's an example of ways that you can look at natural resources in terms of a climate action planning effort.
In other communities, and I don't know to what extent it is true for Hingham, agriculture is a major source of carbon emissions. It's not on your list. Is that because it's just immaterial for our town?
We're going to look into that and see. There obviously is some agricultural emissions, so we will be looking at that. But it's not enough on a standalone basis, so we would probably see that maybe in community or natural resources.
Yeah. I mean, to point, Joe, it's like if you look at, like, we're a river farm, you know, and what might the methane output be of the cattle that they keep there on a temporary basis? That is certainly something that we can consider. One thing, and Tanya and I haven't discussed this, is to the extent that we look at waste as part of that as well, you know? So that's something that we can look at.
Have you looked at how we might be able to influence our neighboring communities? So this is not just Hingham, but expand our influence and perhaps partner with other communities. Is that part of what you're looking at?
Yeah, absolutely, and we've already made inroads on that in multiple ways. One, even in coming to this effort, we surveyed and contacted multiple of our peer communities to look at their climate action plans. And we have attended multiple regional groups that discuss these issues. I think we'll be happy to hear that Hingham is seen right now as a leader on the South Shore in the efforts that we're undertaking here. And while I say that with no small amount of pride, if you also look at the communities that are west and north of Boston, some of them have been, are much further along than we have. So we're definitely looking at that both from a learning opportunity as well as a resourcing and grant opportunity as well. So the more funds we can attract to this effort, and the state tends to look more favorably upon regional efforts for that, so that's certainly a consideration that we're looking at.
Yeah, and I'll just add, some of this will be organic. I'm the Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee and co-hasset, and so that obviously starts to create some of those bonds. We're already working with Situit in Marshfield and Norwell, so again, the circle broadens. And as part of this report, we will identify economies of scale, regional opportunities to help lower the cost of some of the implementation. And that's where I think the regional cooperation is going to come into play in the report.
So you've anticipated my last question, which is, to what extent are funding opportunities a factor here? Because there are state and federal incentives, and so I want to, I'm sure that you're looking at this, making sure that we're going in a direction that, well, perhaps we might not want to go here if it was too expensive, but there's state funding available, so we're going to go there. So I just want to make sure that that is a priority in terms of how the plan is being put together.
Absolutely, and understanding the state funding and federal funding opportunities and the hazard mitigation plan that was just mentioned has amazing opportunities through FEMA grants. So there's lots of funding opportunities, I think, from a cost benefit analysis. The report can identify, perhaps in an appendix, where some of those grant opportunities are, what the current focus is, but that's going to change over time. And that's partly why this document is going to be a living document. But that said, understanding that there are funding opportunities, understanding that gap on some of the key approaches that needs to be filled can hopefully allow this climate action plan to be taken to a funding proposal and say, look, we've identified it, we want to do it, here's the gap that exists today, here's why we'd like to have that funding to fill that gap.
Great. And just to echo one of Tanya's points there, just because funding may not be available at this moment for a project we want, doesn't mean it won't be available tomorrow. And so this will be a living effort. If there's at least one thing I would expect to come out of a town meeting next year, it's to how to consider the implementation and further development of the plan over time, because it will need to change. If we're marching towards a 2040 date, you know, as of today, that's a little less than 18 years away. Technologies change, facts change, budgets change, and so forth. So the plan will need to be revisited and minded and watched, and so, and with that comes opportunity as well.
Great. Thank you. Any questions?
A member of the public?
I know you've been working with the committee. You'd like to add anything, Art?
I'd only add that I'm very excited about this process. I had the chance to join the first public engagement meeting. It was a lot of energy, a lot of good thought, a lot of big decisions to make, but I'm looking forward to working with Brad and the committee and set conditions for great decisions down the road.
Great. Thank you. Well, thank you for coming in tonight. Thank you for your time. We'll see you in a couple of months, I guess, yeah?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Nice to meet you, Tanya. Thank you. You guys have a good July 4th.
You do as well. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to sign the collective bargaining agreement with the Hingham Police Patrolmen's Association. So Chief, if you want to come up with the next three items, have you set up here? These next two items had been on our agenda about two weeks ago. We held them over for our review of council. So I don't have any additional questions at this time. Chief, do you want to add anything based on what we talked about last time?
No, I think we're all set. Everything last time still holds true.
Okay. Joe, do you have any additional questions?
Nope.
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
No questions. We confirmed that all the changes are reflected in the CBA.
Okay. Then with that, on item nine, I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to sign the collective bargaining agreement with the Hingham Police Patrolmen's Association. I'm sorry, that's not right.
Effective as of?
Sorry. I'll make a motion to sign the collective bargaining agreement with the Hingham Police Patrolmen's Association, effective as of July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2024.
Second.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And moving to item 10, is to sign the collective bargaining agreement with the Hingham Police Superior Officers Union, MCOP Local 405. Are there any questions or comments about this item on the agenda?
Nope.
Then I'll take a motion.
I move to sign the collective bargaining agreement with the Hingham Police Superior's Officers Union, MCOP Local 405, effective as of July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2024.
Second.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and item 11 is to appoint Officer Matthew Galvin, recently retired Officer Matthew Galvin, as a special police officer for the town of Hingham. Dave, do you want to add anything to this item?
Just that Officer Galvin retired as of the 23rd. We had a ceremony for him and Officer James Ross this morning, and Officer Galvin wishes to continue on working part-time for us. It's a huge help to us because we are losing some of our special officers due to police reform legislation, and having retired officers that stay on and are able to work security and special events helps out the department as a whole. So be thrilled if we can appoint him as a special, and he'll be at the Fourth of July events if you do.
Well, it was a very nice ceremony this morning. And having known both Matt and Jimmy, I can say that, you know, we're losing two great, great people, two great police officers. Matt served 35 years.
35 years, correct.
And Jimmy must have been pretty close to that, too.
29.
29. And I'll always certainly remember, as I said this morning, Jimmy's work with Axel.
Yes.
As a K-9 officer, and Matt's interface with the public, and, you know, both great officers. So happy to do this. Any questions or concerns, Liz?
No questions, no concerns.
Joe?
No questions.
All right. Well, knowing Matt, I'm going to make this motion. I'd make a motion to appoint Officer Matthew Galvin as a special police officer for the town of Hingham.
Second.
Motion made and second. And all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Chief, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Take care, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider appointments. We do not have any appointments this evening. I do not see anyone in the public currently present, so I'll move to item 14, which is Town Administrator Select Board Report. So Art, why don't you start tonight?
Well, thank you. I have nothing to add this evening.
Great. Michelle?
Sure, just one item. So Thursday is June 30th. It's the end of a fiscal year and the end of an era. We are saying goodbye to two of our employees. John Ferris is the school business manager and has been so for more than a decade, I believe, and Jean Montgomery is our longtime treasurer collector, and she's worked for the town for more than three decades. So I want to thank and acknowledge them both for their many contributions to the town over many years, to our collective finance team here. They're both Hingham residents, so they're not going too far, but we wish them well in their retirement. It won't be the same without them. Thank you.
Michelle, thank you. Liz?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Joe?
Nothing other than wishing all of us an enjoyable July 4th holiday. Thank you.
I agree with that. All right. With that, then, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, everybody, have a great July 4th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.